Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. Tonight is August 10, 2021. Roll call please.
Ms. Stecadi?
Here.
Ms. Conover. Ms. Hoover. Ms. Redonia.
Here.
Mr. Avia.
Here.
Ms. Coyle.
Here.
Mr. Maron.
Here.
Okay. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss negotiations and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Stecadi?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay. Six oh one, we can head into closed sessions. If you guys could bring your black folders with you into closed. That would be great.
Thank you.
It's August tenth and the board is resuming open session after our closed session. The first item on the agenda is public comments and we have one public comment from Whitney Rogers. Go ahead and step up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Whitney Rogers and I am coming before everyone here this evening, not just as a resident of Westmont or only as a CUSD 201 parent, but as an advocate and voice for the entire student body of CUSD 201, our children. We are all aware that Governor Pritzker issued a mask mandate last Wednesday stating that all students and teachers in schools will be required to wear masks while indoors. Governor Pritzker also stated it, masks will also apply to all students and coaches participating in indoor sports and other activities. So, not only does the governor want parents as well as members of each respective school district, i.e. the teachers, the administrators, superintendents, etc., to inflict this control tactic onto our children, he is asking you, the members of CUSD 201, to inflict this onto yourselves. Governor Pritzker is encouraging all parents and guardians within the state of Illinois to abuse their child or children. That's right, abuse. The definition of abuse is the improper usage or treatment of a thing, often to unfairly or improperly gain benefit. Abuse can come in many forms such as physical or verbal maltreatment, injury, assault, violation, rape, unjust practices, crimes, or other types of aggression. Governor Pritzker is mandating parents and educators to do something that is not only immoral but is illegal. The mask mandate is requiring the responsible individuals, us, the adults, to abuse our children. It is requiring us to enforce the improper use of a thing, the mask, for improper gain, school funding. It is estimated that only approximately 25% of school funding comes from the state of Illinois, while approximately 7% of school funding comes from the federal government. Now, if at least 50% of the CUSD 201 parents were to remove their children out of the CUSD 201 school system and opt to homeschool their child or children, that would mean CUSD will lose approximately 16% of their funding. A 16% deficit doesn't sound like much, but when that 16% has to be made up elsewhere, i.e. tax dollars, property tax increases, etc., that's when it'll become more of a concern. Why wait until something like that occurs to make it a concern then? Our children are priority, so the concern is now. So, not only is Governor Pritzker requiring the parents and educators to abuse our children, he's abusing each and every resident within the state of Illinois. The abuse is coming in forms of physical mask mandate, verbal maltreatment stating that we are required to mask our children and ourselves when a mandate can't trump a law, especially a law that does not exist. Injury, masks can potentially create fear, anxiety, and headaches. Violation, physical, mental, emotional, and legal, and unjust practices. We are morally and legally obligated to protect our children from harm, not inflict harm onto them. As a mandated reporter, being that I work for the largest juvenile facility within the country, Cook County Juvenile Temporary Detention Center in Chicago, I refuse to allow my children to be abused and I refuse to stand by and watch other children to be abused. I have not only a legal obligation to report the maltreatment of any child, be it mine or someone else's, I also have a moral compass that allows me to be empathetic towards others and stand up for what is right and not bow down to what is wrong. Mandates violate the separation of powers doctrine. Mandates are not legislated into law and have no lawful standing in court. No government or private entity open to the public can mandate that a patron, employee, or any other citizen to wear a mask or get a vaccination. Anyone that threatens another with no service, no employment, fines, or jail for not wearing a mask or for not having a vaccination is using coercion, which is a felony. Anyone who does this is also violating the Americans with Disabilities Act, religious discrimination, HIPAA, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Code 42, subsection 1983, and the newer code, Article VI, Section 3, which is international law. Anyone who does any of the above mentioned is also committing a felony under the deprivation of rights, U.S. Code, Section 242 of Title 18. Forcing masks is not only morally wrong and abusive, but is also discriminatory and illegal. Attorney Thomas DeVore of DeVore Law Offices Attorney Thomas DeVore of DeVore Law Offices LLC has filed a lawsuit against Governor Pritzker for the mask mandate as of yesterday, August ninth. So, I am now asking that the CUSD 201 Board of Education exert the same level of sovereignty that the state of Illinois has the ability to do, govern your school district. Don't allow Governor Pritzker to inflict gaslighting on any CUSD 201 parent, teacher, administrator, or superintendent by making one into believing that masking our children is the right thing to do. Understand that the right thing to do is to not allow fear mongering tactics to sway your moral compass when it comes to that of our human and constitutional rights on behalf of our children and ourselves. It is our right to have a choice as to what happens to us as human beings. Exercise that same right into our children, allow them to have a choice as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, since there's no other public comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, this is Lisa Lance.
Hi there. Lisa Lance, elementary parent, just wanted to make a public comment that I'm very, very thankful that equity inclusion are on the agenda tonight. I know this is something that I've talked to you guys about before from this podium, but I'm just really thankful that you're digging in and that you're asking tough questions and you're hoping to equip our students, our teachers, our families in our district to tackle some of these issues that I think in some ways we dismiss culturally because they become like a buzzword or things that people have animosity about on social media and then as a way to sort of not get involved in the fray, we just dismiss it altogether. And so, I'm really thankful that you guys are taking this on and I'm excited to see sort of the trajectory as we start these conversations because it isn't going to change us overnight. But that I'm confident that you guys actually putting in a specific plan to implement these kinds of discussions and this kind of inclusivity will, moving forward, put some good roots down in our district to help all of us grow. So, thank you. I feel like you don't hear thank you enough. You hear a lot of critique. So, I'm excited to be a part of these conversations with you. I know there are lots of families in our district who are really excited. There's a lot of voices that haven't ever come to the table that have a lot to offer in this. So, I'm excited to see how you specifically seek those people out and include them. But, thank you. This is, this is the work that you guys actually, I'm pretty sure, are passionate about and why you joined the school board. Masks probably weren't on your agenda when you decided, you know, to care for our students. So, you've done all of that really hard work that you didn't necessarily sign up for, but I'm pretty sure that helping our kids grow is something that you're passionate about, which is why you're in those seats. So, thank you for caring about this and kind of beginning this conversation tonight. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think there's no other public comments at this point. So, we're going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Leah, are you on?
Aye.
Okay. Just making sure you're there. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the July 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. John Baldwin, part-time FTE for PE teacher for Miller School. John Baldwin, part-time FTE for Special Education TA. Kimberly Rosales, dual-language kindergarten teacher at Miller. Stephanie Gilto, Special Ed Teaching Assistant. Jean Heasley, Special Ed Teaching Assistant. Chris Han, Special Ed Teaching Assistant. Jeffrey Melvin. And then we have resignations. Number two, certificate of hazardous crossing. Number three, board authorization of vehicle use. Number four, approval of additional July 2021 expenditure report. And number five, approval of donation from ASCO Drug of Children's Masks and Hand Sanitizer.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are the information discussion items, starting with the summer facility projects update.
All right, we just wanted to update you on what we've been working on this summer. So, at the high school, the building automation system has been replaced. That should be complete hopefully by the end of this week and that will provide better control of our heating and cooling systems at the high school. There were plumbing projects there as part of the 10-year life safety survey for the kitchen and in the trainer's room. We had gone out to bid late spring, early summer for the roof replacement at the high school because of wind damage and then also an alternate bid to replace another section of roof. And as the board has been informed, it's difficult for a contractor to guarantee delivery of product and the price. And so, we will be working on that, going out probably to rebid late winter, early spring, so that we can get some guaranteed pricing and availability of material. In the meantime, we just found out today, we saw repairs pricing to kind of get us through the winter months. And the insurance company gave us approval today for the repairs to get us through the winter. So, that will be starting soon. Then, at the junior high, again, another plumbing project on the 10-year life safety survey with some drain work that needed to be done. And then the village has finally approved the replacement for the digital marquee sign. And so, we're just waiting for one more permit and then we can get that project going. And so, John Jonek, the principal, has funding set aside for that project at Manning. Again, there were plumbing projects on the 10-year life safety survey where they had to address some hot and cold water supply lines and some areas in the showers in the gym and a sink in the basement of the building. And then, there were also some things that needed to be fixed in the art room related to plumbing, so those have all been repaired. And then, the principal put in a community garden at Manning and you should see there's like six raised beds in that area. At Miller, again, plumbing projects related to the 10-year life safety survey. So, they had to increase a pipe from a two-inch to a four-inch. It was quite a large project, but that has been completed as well. And then, some additional work done in the kitchen related to floor drains and the air gap. And then, there were no projects at South this winter. And those plumbing life safety projects were part of, funded through our life safety remaining, like our life safety funds that we have remaining. And then, we also received a $50,000 matching grant, school maintenance project grant, to offset some of those costs. We will be working with the facilities committee. Joe is working on reprioritizing items so that we can go through that with the facilities committee, then meet with the finance committee and start working on that. And as we've discussed at other meetings, the HVAC system replacement at Westmont Junior High is the top priority. We've also set aside $600,000 in S R 3 to go toward that project. So, we may need to go out to and issue some bonds, but as we get a little bit closer, we'll start looking at that and having discussions. And then, we also did receive notice today that the state has another school maintenance project grant funding out there. So, we will be applying, and that's again, a $50,000 matching grant. You have to do a $100,000 project and they'll match 50,000 if you're approved for it. It's a competitive grant. So, Joe and I will be working on that and present that information to you. That's due sometime in October, so.
Does anybody have questions?
All right, thank you.
If there's no questions, the PR committee update is next.
Hi, that's me. I haven't made any kind of presentation or anything. Something I gotta do in the future. We've, as the board, are all on a bunch of committees, so. Recently, the PR committee met. Myself, Adina, and Carlos going forward will be on this committee as well. Jack Baldorman and Amy Quattron are on the committee with us. We met back in July to throw some ideas around and we created a SMART goal of that by the end of the 21, 22 school year, the 201 PR committee will significantly approve stakeholder opinions of D 201 through the use of PR materials, increased communication, and more community involvement. So, starting on our end as board members, and we're going to include all the board going forward, we're going to be more present at events so we can mingle with the community. They know who we are. It's going to be a different array of events. The first one's starting next Monday when the staff is officially starting the school year. We will, whoever's available, because we know it's during the day, whoever's available will meet during the official first meeting of the year. After that, we're looking to have a celebration of the accomplishment in D 201. The, who is it? The awards, the scholastic team, we're going to do that in October at the high school. They're looking to get a real estate fair together where Amy said this has been done in the past, where all the real estate agents, they have a bunch of real estate agents come in and we fill them in on what's going on in our school district. So, then they know and they can tell their clients what's going on and why Westmont's a great place to live. So, they're looking to do that again. And then, if everybody can keep open November 10th, it's going to be the 100th anniversary celebration. So, we want to try and get everybody in the community for that. Other than that, we're going to ramp up our social media presence. We've started an Instagram just to promote all the good things going on because Facebook has kind of laxed over the last couple of years, but people still enjoy just seeing the pictures on Instagram, so we're going there. And then, in the future, when the joint committees start again, we're going to be looking for other stakeholders to continue to join in on this PR to get more ideas. So, that's where we're at.
Great. Any questions from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I just have one, which is when is the next subcommittee?
We thought maybe the end, it looks more like September. We will let you know. I'm going, since I got your email, we're going to send you the original agenda and anything and then Amy and Jack will communicate with you. Thanks.
Did you guys talk at all, Ange, about things like town halls or, you know, coffee and conversation with a board member?
It was mentioned. We didn't do a full-blown, like we just dabbled on it a little bit, but not like full-blown, get the town together. Beyond the real estate, we did talk about maybe doing meet and greets with business owners.
Yep.
And then just going from there, so.
Okay, and I, and I know that that's part of the plan for certain projects, so maybe that's how it starts as well. I just wanted to see what had been talked about there.
Yeah, we dabbled on it a little bit because the same thing. We brought in the task force where that would be comparable to do that, so. But, we didn't go on any big picture on that.
Awesome.
Laura, your question made me think of another one. And I know we've talked about this before, but just, and also let me say that that all sounds really great. I'm following the account on Instagram, appreciate that. We've talked about like newspaper media coverage and how we're kind of in this black hole of coverage in this district and I think it would be nice to get some of that great news published in some of those outlets too, so is that part of the conversation?
We did, we have a contact with Suburban, my Suburban life.
Oh, great.
And we dabbled in the idea of maybe getting a whole community newsletter from us out and in Westmont Life, but we're, we were coming against some roadblocks because that whole media aspect is kind of dying off. And that's why we're ramping up social media. But, we were, we were talking about how to get to the other areas that don't do anything with social media. So, we talked a little bit about a community-wide newsletter, but that's all still early in the works and once we get Carlos on and then more people going forward, I think we'll get a lot more ideas.
Great, I was just wondering. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Ange? Okay. The next item on the agenda is equity and inclusion.
I just wanted to share with the board some of the thinking and the planning around equity and inclusion that we're considering as a district. And, you know, as a district, we wanted to make sure that all of our students have a sense of belonging and that they're successful. We want our staff to have a sense of belonging, our community, and we want our schools to be welcoming places. That's what we're striving for. Currently, in the news media, you're seeing three terms that are kind of out there that are being used interchangeably and those are critical race theory, culturally responsive teaching, and equity and inclusion. And I just wanted to first start with kind of just briefly defining those terms and, and really, they're not synonyms for one another. Critical race theory is actually an academic concept and it began in the 1980s. It was a Harvard study. And the Harvard study was taking a look at laws and policies and seeing if there was some either intended or unintended discrimination or bias in some laws and some policies. And that's where you'll see critical race theory, it's more in law practices. It's used as a lens when you're looking at different laws and different policies. It's not something that's taught in schools. And I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a K through 12 school that is teaching critical race theory. Again, it's a, it's more of a lens that's being used to determine if practices are discriminatory. And so, it definitely is not, again, is not a subject that's being taught in K to 12 schools. It's not part of anybody's social studies curriculum. And again, it's not a synonym for culturally responsive teaching. In terms of what culturally responsive teaching, here are three different definitions, but, you know, it's more about knowing our students, knowing our community that we're working with and developing those positive relationships. It's, as this slide shows, it's really about the relationships and understanding our students. And when you have a dual-language program, you're already very much entrenched in culturally responsive teaching. I mean, you can't teach dual language without being culturally responsive. Over time, we have taken a look at the books we have our students read. I always like to say that for a while there, it was always old white men, that that was the literature that, you know, students read. And there are a lot of, you know, great female authors. There's a lot of different authors out there, different ethnic groups that students really should be exposed to. And there's also, you know, when students can see themselves in either the literature or in the content that's being studied or even in our staff. I mean, that goes a long way towards building those positive relationships. And so, that's, that's more the crux of what culturally responsive teaching is. Again, it's, it's our, you know, it's making connections. It's understanding and bringing different cultures into the classroom. It's understanding that sometimes the way people think and respond is based upon their culture and it helps when we, when we understand those things. culture, and it helps when we, when we understand those things. Again, sometimes what we hear of what it is, it's definitely, it's not, it's not telling any students that they're racist. That's not what culturally responsive teaching is. So, we're, we're talking about equity and inclusion, and I love this definition, it's to ensure the fair treatment and quality of opportunity and fairness and access to information and resources for all. It's when, again, students and employees all feel welcome, they're seen, they're safe, they're respected, cared for and understood. And again, that's the positive relationships, it's those relationships that are critical towards equity and inclusion. I like these graphics because, again, sometimes we talk about equality and sometimes we talk about equity. And equity, especially in a school setting, is making sure that all students have what they need to be successful. And so, that's why I like the second graphic in the lower right, where, you know, it's more important that, again, you know, not every student needs the same amount of support, but we make sure that the students get the support they need to be successful in our schools. And so, that's what equity is. The other thing too is, it's not just ethnicity or race when you start looking at equity. You know, there are so many different lenses to look through, and this chart kinda shows you all the different lenses that when you start talking about equity and inclusion, it goes beyond, again, that race or ethnicity. You know, it's, it's about, you know, special needs students, it's students that speak different languages, different cultures, different socioeconomic backgrounds, gender, sexuality, all those things. When you start really looking at equity and inclusion, you've gotta look at all those subgroups, you know? I made a point to also share, I do this every fall when the school report comes out, and we talk about our demographics, and so, definitely in our district, we have ethnic diversity. But again, when you start to look at your demographics, we again have students that have IEPs, we have students that English is their second language, they're emerging bilinguals. We have low-income students, we have students who are homeless. You know, when you start looking at our attendance and our mobility rate, chronic absences, it's not just enough to look at the numbers, but you gotta look at what students are making up those numbers, and that's where the equity comes in, that's where the inclusion comes in, you know? Making sure that we understand what those numbers mean and who those students are. So, in terms of what I'd like to, the district to do, is, we can call it a committee or a task force, but an equity committee or a task force, and I would think that the first step is an equity audit. And I would recommend, and at a future meeting, I can share information with the board, but there's a couple of different outside resources that will come in, and they'll do the deep dive. You know, they'll look at your data, they'll also do the surveying and the interviews, and they talk to students, and they talk to community members, and they talk to staff, and they ask those hard questions, you know? And we like to always, I know every fall when I talk about our, our schools, we are so proud of the fact that we have 100% graduation rate of our African-American students and Hispanic students. And that is something we're very proud of, but that doesn't necessarily mean that those students feel welcome and included. You know, you can't necessarily make that correlation, so, and again, we have students that come from all different backgrounds, that we wanna make sure that our schools are welcoming places for all the students and that we're supporting them as they need to be supported. And so, it's asking those tough questions, and then, once we have that data and we see where our gaps are, you know, and where we need to get better, well, then, we can start putting together the action plans so that we can address those areas, we can make sure that those areas that we're strong in, that we continue being strong in those areas, but then those areas where possibly we need to be better, and we need to take a hard look in the mirror and say, okay, where do we need to be better, that then we take those steps to put in those action plans to make sure that we're better. And at the end of the day, I think, you know, I'm proud of our district, I think we're a great district, but, you know, I think we need to, you know, take that hard look at our district to make sure that, you know, below the surface, we're just as proud of who we are. So, any questions?
I don't, I don't know if I have questions, but I do have a couple of comments. One would be, thank you very much for putting this together. I think it's really useful to draw these distinctions between these terms, and I really appreciate the focus on equity, equity and inclusion, but equity, I think the word equity in the graphic that you showed is also perfectly illustrative of what we're trying to, what we're talking about.
Right.
Right? So, that's comment number one. And comment number two is, you know, I, I have a lot of contact with the Hispanic community, not in this community actually, believe it or not, even though I've lived here for two years, but in general terms, I do, in other communities and places that I've been. And it's easy when you're, when you're in the Hispanic community to understand that a lot of the people that are, that are in your community don't speak the language, because they quite literally don't speak the language, some of them, some of us, of the people that are sitting on boards like this and in places like this. But it's not so easy whenever your, whenever your distinctive quality is, is your, is something about your gender, your sexuality, maybe your, your income level, that, that everyone speaks a bit of a different language. And I think that when, as we move forward with this effort, I think we need to understand that we're going to be talking with people who don't understand what we're saying.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it's not because of English as a language.
Right.
And that, and that we need to understand them, and we need to make sure that they feel understood by us.
Right, right.
And I, and I, and again, when you're part of the Hispanic community, it's easy to identify this issue, but when it's, when, when the differences come from a different place, because we all speak English, I think we forget this. So, if this is more maybe to the other board members than it is to you, it's, as we do this, keep this, this piece in mind, because it's, it's, it's pitfalls waiting to be fallen into.
On that note, I really appreciate that we're going into this because I grew up in Chicago and went to a school in the suburbs that took people, a private school with a lot of people. And when I went to the, it was the same thing, though. I knew black, I knew white, I knew Latinx people, that was it. I moved to the further-out suburbs, and I saw a race of people that I had never encountered in my life when I was 16, and I was like, who are these people? I don't know who these people are, and I knew nothing about it. I don't know how it was never touched on, maybe it was all the years I was at private school or not, but I really appreciate that schools are looking forward to doing this and expanding everyone's knowledge. I shared this with Kevin, I just want everybody else on the board to know, are we gonna make sure on a task force that we're gonna have everybody covered? I know we have a lot of allies in our district, I just wanna make sure every voice is going to be covered in that task force.
I also am so appreciative of this. I think that, like Carlos said, just defining the terms is so great. I also just, you know, there's always work to be done and a lot of steps to be made, but I wanna commend the district for what they've done already. I mean, I think anybody who's walked in the hallways or met teachers know that, you know, I think when you boil this down to the bare minimum, conversations of equity and inclusion come down to relationships and care for the people who are in front of you and wanting to know them and understand them. And I think that the district and the teachers and the principals have already done a lot to do that. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I appreciate that we acknowledge that, but also appreciate the great things that have been done already to care for our students and appreciate all of their differences. I guess some of my questions, these are kinda more like logistical questions, two things. Number one, what like a proposed kind of timeline might be, like, when are we hoping to have this audit completed or, you know, procure an audit company who's gonna do that? And just a little more information about like the cost of that, if we're bringing somebody in to do that, that deep dive, I would be really curious to know about those things. You know, I'm curious about the action plan too and potential professional development, but I don't think we're even close to that yet.
Right, right.
And so, I won't really get into that. I think for now, it's just questions on that first step, because I would, you know, love to see this kind of materialize sooner rather than later.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I think everybody would, so, what's, what are the ideas on that?
You know, definitely, we're, I've already got the names of a couple of outside consultants who do audits. The ROE is also available to do audits, so I'll be reaching out to them and getting proposals from them so I can bring to the board.
Great.
What those costs are. And essentially, they're the ones that will then look at the size of our district and tell us how long they think it would, would take to complete that.
Okay, awesome. And so, we're thinking within the next couple of board meetings?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. That was my only question.
Leah, are you, I know, I don't know, Kevin, if you had a comment?
Yeah.
Or Leah, if you had anything you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna comment, really, and thank Kevin and the district for putting this together and for helping us along with the definitions. And especially something that really resonated with me is really calling out that equity isn't just about ethnicity, you know, seeing almost 20% of our students with IEPs and knowing personally that every single IEP is different, and that's not even including 504 plans. I think something that our district does, does particularly well, especially in comparison to some larger districts, is, is how we individualize, and that's a benefit of being a small district, and I think that we lean into that. So, I look forward to continuing to, to lean into those pieces and learning more about what we're doing really well, which I suspect is a lot of stuff, and also what we can do better on, which I know as a community will reach for. So, thank you.
I guess the only thing I have to say, I'm thankful that all the students that do need help are getting help, and I've seen that firsthand, you know, the, my son, they've, the schools have made him a wonderful reader, he loves it, and I'm just thankful that all the students are getting the help they need.
Yeah, and I'll just say, so, thank you, Kevin, for putting together this presentation. I mean, I, my personal opinion is this is one of the most important things we can do for our district and for our students. And I'm so glad with the approach you've put together, and my only question slash comment is similar to Jess's. I think, you know, Carlos and Ange have both covered making sure we hear all of the voices. And then I'm also curious, as you lay out a timeline for this work, how do you see that timeline intersecting with other major strategic projects that we have going? So, for instance, the strategic plan is, is one of those major projects that could be very heavily influenced by the outcomes of this equity work. The elementary school task force, I think, is another project that in my mind could be very heavily influenced by this equity work. So, I guess I'd just be curious from your perspective, what, how you see this timeline intersecting with those other major timelines that we have out there?
Well, my goal is to have the audit completed this fall, you know, so we'll have an idea of where those gaps are in those target areas. So, the elementary task force is looking to wrap up in November, so I think the timing there works. And then, tomorrow, we're having an admin workshop on the strategic plan, so I think after that, we'll have something for our committee to take a look at. And so, I think the timing of it, and a strategic plan is also a living, breathing document.
Yeah.
And so, as we get more information and data, we can, can tweak the strategic plan as needed.
Awesome. Thank you.
On a side note, with the elementary task force, once the audit is complete, will you bring those test results to the task force?
Oh.
Because I know the meetings are a little more limited now from here till November. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Kevin. And then the next item on the agenda is the elementary task force.
I don't have a formal presentation of this, but I did include some, some documents for the board. On August 4th, we, our task force, we met, we had four meetings this summer to focus on the, our elementary schools and the model we think will work best for us as a district. And it was, and as I shared in my board memo, there was actually kind of this aha moment because I think the task force was very focused on enrollments and this idea that we're looking at this as a way to accommodate bubbles as they move through the district. And so, the question came up like, what pain is the district trying to avoid? Is that why we're doing this? And is it worth creating a lot of angst and anxiety for something like enrollment bubbles and so forth? And the reality is, it's not so much a pain we're trying to avoid, but rather, it's a vision we have for our elementary schools, you know, that we want to be able to meet the needs of all our students academically, support them socially, emotionally. I'll give you a quick example. At Manning, Lindsay Petersak is gonna be able to have a, have a STEM program this year that Manning has not had before. So, she'll have a dedicated staff member that will, all the students will have experiences in STEM, and, and that's in part because of how she's currently organized, and she can take her staff, that's a resource, and manipulate it and create that opportunity. And so, you know, those are things we wanna make sure that we're doing, you know, that our struggling learners are being supported, our advanced learners are being supported. As you can imagine, even, you know, the, the easy example is when you look at high school versus junior high versus elementary. There are certain staff members that are more talented with different age groups. I mean, that's only natural, and so, so often you'll hear even the staff talking about, oh, I could never teach junior high, or I don't know how you teach high school, or I don't know how you teach elementary. Well, even, you know, we talk about elementary K5, but again, it's a pretty wide range of ages and abilities, and there are some staff members that work very well, and, and not just the classroom teacher, but when you start looking at special ed staff and social workers and psychologists that, you know, when we, one of the questions that the task force had was, some of the area districts that are in grade-level centers, for instance, what do they see as the advantage? And that's what was reported from some was, we're able to take our staff and their strengths and put them in a building where they will be most successful and our students are best supported. And so, there's all those reasons. Now, you know, we said to the task force, can we do that in 2K5 buildings? We can, but that's where sometimes the pain comes in. You know, if we want some of those opportunities, it might mean a larger class size, because, again, you know, we know we have limited resources, you know, staffing, budget, there's limited resources. And so, that ultimately is, the question is, okay, when we envision where we see our buildings going, how do we best accommodate that? And so, again, we had the four meetings this summer. The first meeting was just, you know, not limiting ourselves to the concept of, of K5 or grade-level centers, but are there other possibilities? And so, some of the things that were brainstormed were, you know, adding on to Manning and having one elementary school, you know, building a brand-new elementary school, moving a grade level to the junior high, flipping Manning and the junior high, you know, because of different capacities. So, there, there are a lot of things that were, were generated. The second meeting, then, we kind of started to drill down a little deeper into those different options, and, okay, what does that actually look like, and is there a cost involved, and what does that cost look like, and, you know, what does that look like? And then our third meeting, we started to narrow focus and start talking about the strengths and weaknesses of different options, and, and ultimately, we, we came down to, the top two options ended up being grade-level centers or 2K5 buildings. New elementary building or one elementary building was, was close, you know? And so, then our fourth meeting was, okay, this group had an opportunity to look at all this different information and have this discussion, but how do we now get input from our other stakeholders? So, how do we go from a group of about 30? We have 900 families in the district, plus we have, you know, people who live in our district that currently don't have students in our, in our schools. Either they never did, or their children have grown, or maybe they haven't started sending students to our district. And so, we brainstormed then those different subgroups. So, we have parents of current students, we have community members in the district, we have teachers, well, staff, I should say, administrators, and so we have these different groups, and then we started to brainstorm, okay, And so we have these different groups, and then we started to brainstorm, okay, what do we, what information needs to be shared with these groups? And then what responses are we looking to solicit? And how are we going to do that? And so we generated some questions to be asked of those groups to get feedback on. And now it's a matter of a core group of us kind of taking that feedback and, you know, putting into surveys. And then we brainstormed, okay, how do we now reach out to these different groups? You know, and so is it social media? Is it through, we know we have at least one homeowners association in our district. Do we have others? You know, do we enlist the help of the chamber to reach out to businesses in the district? The easy groups are the, the groups that we have, right? Our own staff and those individuals, but it's, it's working outside of those groups. So we're starting to put that together. And then we're going to bring our committee back together to kind of review that information. We'll start to have those surveys and those meetings. And then our goal is to bring a complete report to the board at the November 16 board meeting, so that the board can start having those conversations so that if we want to do anything for that next school year, we have time for the board to, you know, discuss it and come to a consensus so that we can move forward with whatever that recommendation is.
So Kevin, do you envision at that meeting or in the future, after you've gathered all this feedback, like bringing to us what the recommendation is? Like, you're going to kind of sift, like you and the administrators will sift through that and say, like, you know, based on all of the work that we've done, and it's a tremendous amount of work, I'm so happy that we're doing it. Like, we really think that grade level centers are the way to go, and here's why. Or we really think we should stick with 2K5 bill? Is that kind of what you envision, or just kind of coming to us and saying, here's everything? What do you think?
I envision us coming to the board with kind of the consensus of what
Okay.
our committee did, with the pluses and minuses. But again, it's not a decision-making body ultimately.
Right.
But we will share with you what the consensus of that group was.
Okay, great. I just wanted to ask that. And then my other question, just a point of clarification, I think this is what I'm hearing, is that when you initially went into this, there was maybe an idea that the grade level centers were being discussed as just like a quick fix to this temporary issue of enrollment. But really, what I think I'm hearing is that the grade level centers are more motivated by the ability to bring the absolute best educational experience to our students and, you know, just on the tail end of a conversation on equity to ensure an equitable educational experience for every child in this district.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Right. Because one of the realities we've already faced is, you have Miller and Manning, and they're just two different sized buildings. And so
Yeah.
when you start talking about, you know, for instance, implementing a STEM program, how Manning is able to do that is going to look very different than what Miller would be able to do.
Right.
And again, that creates, in some cases, inequity because of that.
And I think, you know, and I'm sure that the task force has done this, but a very simple exercise of a side-by-side comparison of the report cards, which are available online, it's a very visible inequity
Right.
in our grade schools. And so I appreciate that we're having these conversations.
Yeah, not to mention the makeup of those two schools is very different.
Mm-hmm.
So the students attending, their income level, their, their backgrounds, their demographics. So, I mean, it's definitely something we want to pay attention to as we're looking at this, this work. I had a question, Kevin, about the, the feedback. And maybe I just am being not too smart right now, but are you saying that these, between the parents, community members, teachers and staff and administrators, that the feedback is all survey-based? Or is there different types?
No, we'll, we'll be doing some survey, but then we'll be also doing some in-person meetings.
Okay.
You know, we're hoping that we're doing in-person meetings.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, that's, and, and part of it is, you know, typically, it's kind of interesting, you ask Angie about the coffees. And I, I can probably find out for you, but, you know, we were doing super intense coffees at one time, and we weren't, people just weren't coming out, you know? And so that's why we kind of moved away from that. The best meetings that we've ever had were always around referendums. Because then, and that's when you get people who are invested beyond just parents of students. You know, now you get, you know, those property owners and so forth. So the, and maybe it's a conversation with our PR committee, is what's the hook to make sure that we're engaging, you know, a really good cross-section of our, of our district? And so survey is one, but it can't be the only way. So there will be some dialogue and some conversations.
Yeah, that, that was kind of, you're predicting what my concern is. I think, back to the equity conversation, how do we make sure that the people we're hearing from when we do this work represents the true equity that exists in our district? So that we make decisions that are, that are really based on, you know, making sure everyone is seen and everyone is heard and feels respected and a part of this process? And there's obviously different strategies to reach different groups of people. And so I just would challenge us to really think inclusively and comprehensively about how we reach as many of the stakeholders as we can, especially in the parent group.
Right.
Kevin, so two quick questions. Have we or are we planning to partner with the city? You mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, but also the city maybe having a representative at the village meetings or something in, just the library, et cetera? Have, have we or has that come up?
That did not come up, Leah, but those are ideas that we can explore. We, you know, it's kind of nice, our district has a very good working relationship with our village, with our library, our park district. So those are definitely avenues we can explore to get input.
Yes. Yeah, definitely. I think about like, we're getting the cool new board at the junior high, which is amazing. But then there's also the library board, which I know I read all the time. And then also the fire district board on the south side on Cass Avenue, so that I definitely read. And then my other question slash comment is just a, a note. I haven't heard a lot about cost factors here. So I know that in theory, if we were operating two of the same buildings, yes, it might end up costing the same, but costing the same. But I just want to make sure that budgets and the dollar amounts are part of the conversation as well, as far as maybe one of the two can potentially help us save some money here or there, being able to consolidate some stuff, kind of like the STEM program over at Manning. So just that, I just didn't hear anything about any budgetary implications.
And we, we did talk some numbers. We didn't get very deep into numbers with the task force, but that's definitely got to be part of the consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I just want to loop back to what Laura was asking, because I'm not sure that I understood. The, between August 4th and November 16th, what, what's going to happen is kind of a really broad open question. So there's a lot that's going to happen.
Right.
Obviously, it's a lot of time. But are there specific events that are going to happen? Are there, are there specific meetings that are going to happen? Or, or is that to be determined?
Right, that's, that's currently what we're working on. Based on the feedback from the task force, we're currently developing the surveys and other materials that we're going to be then sharing with the different stakeholders.
Right.
And then seeking that feedback. And so
The outreach, sorry to interrupt you, the outreach will be more than just
Yeah.
surveys, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. Then the, the second comment or question, offer, I guess, really is, how can the PR committee help?
Right.
Help you? I think you mentioned it. I think, I think it's, you know, we're, we're just the, the PR committee for the Board of Education. I mean, the school district is, I think, a much larger thing than just that committee. And PR for the school district is a much larger thing than what it is for the board. And then for the whole community, it's even larger, right? So I don't, I don't, I don't know how exactly, but I'd like for us to be able to help, you know?
We'll definitely be reaching out.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions about that elementary task force? Okay, thank you for that update, Kevin. The next item on the agenda is our action items. The, the first one is the approval of the 2021-2022 Westway contract. Is there any discussion needed here or anything you want to say about it, Kim, in advance of us calling for?
No, other than, you know, they're looking for a four and a half percent increase in our regular routes and 3% for athletics and field trips. And given the scarcity of vendors that can provide transportation services and the ability to attain drivers, I think those are reasonable requests. Other districts have received much higher requests. And so they did do a nice job for us this year. It was a lot of work for everyone involved, but the number of times that we switched back and forth, and every time we switched, we added and subtracted students. So it was like starting a new school year probably six times during the year. And so they were able to accommodate that. So I think they're reasonable requests and a little bit higher than the prior years, but I think overall, we're in a, we, it was a favorable renewal for us.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the one-year contract extension for the 2021-2022 school year for the regular education transportation services with Westway Coach, Inc., Oak Brook, Illinois, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Okay. Number two is the approval of the Athletico three-year contract. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the three-year contract for the 2021-2022, 2022-23, and 2023-24 school years, including summer athletic camps for Athletico Training Services with Athletico Management LLC, Oak Brook, Illinois, in the amount of $95,751.33 as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Okay, superintendent's report?
Just one item in my report, that next Monday, August 16th, starts our new school year. And the first day of student attendance will be August 18th. And if there, we have any families who have not registered yet, please contact your child school. And the building administration will set up an appointment for you so that we can make sure that you're registered before August 18th. But we're looking forward to full-time, in-person learning this year. So we're very excited about that.
Great. Thank you. Are there any board reports?
I have a quick update, a board report for SACID. SACID kicked off the new year about a week ago. They did, they were planning this new year celebration to happen in person, and they did transition to a Zoom new year opening session. They also have released their guidelines on how they're going to handle the school year. And basically, they're going to follow whatever the school districts have in place for the different school districts. So SACID is planning all of its folks to be, to be in the buildings and following whatever's happening with, within each different district, and is excited to get the year kicked off.
Great. Thanks, Leah. Any other board reports?
Elementary Family Night is this Friday, the 13th, at Ty Warner Park. Miller and Manning PTOs are getting together just so you can see the kiddos before, before school starts.
Fantastic. Okay. Not, are there any other public comments? Don't think so, okay. The last, or the next item is future meetings and events. So Westmont Junior High School has the Ice Cream Social. That's August 11th, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at Westmont Junior High. There's a new dual-language family orientation, August 13th, at 4:30 PM at Miller Elementary School. As Ange mentioned, the Miller Manning Elementary Family Fun Night, BYO meal, August 13th at 6:00 PM at Ty Warner Park. The Miller Manning Back to School Night is August 17th at 4:30 PM. The first day of student attendance is August 18th. Preschool screening by appointment is August 19th through the 20th. And our next board meeting is August 24th at 6:00 PM at Village Hall. With that, motion to adjourn. Second.
We need a first.
We need a first, sorry. We need a motion to adjourn. Sorry, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Meeting's adjourned.